Hey, girl.
Hi, guys.
Hey, everyone. Krista, can you let me try my... Let's see.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
You've disabled it, it says. Let me try again. Says host disabled participants sharing screen.
All right, try it now.
Oh, yeah. Now, what do I do? Just go to?
Go to share screen.
I did that.
Screen, like, multiple things should come up.
Yes.
And just pick whichever one you want. Click on that and then hit share.
Well, I don't understand. I just want to show my documents.
You have to have it open.
Okay. God, you are so complicated. All right, it's still not there. Let me get out of my email, first of all, so everybody doesn't have to see what I got there. Um... Get out of that. I have screen, which shows all you guys whiteboard, iPhone, iPad, or launch meeting.
Do you have it open as a document on your computer?
Yeah, I think so. Let me see. Oh, wait a minute. It disappeared. Hang on.
Okay.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Sam.
It was open, huh? Let's see. It's still not showing up. Did you lie to me, Krista?
I don't know. Because remember in the VDOT meeting the other day, they were able to share their screen. Let me, let me open mine, just to...
Oh, here it is. Here it is now. Okay, I got it. Can you see my screen now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent.
Very good.
All right. Are you going to mute everybody except for me and Sam, and then mute Sam?
Well, I have a, I have a question for Krista.
Yes, sir.
I have the verbiage with regard to Governor Northern's order restricting thing. Should I read? Is it okay to read that, or do we need that? Kind of the, the rules you gave me for how an man speak up. I, I can, I can use that for this meeting.
I would probably say it would be better to be safe than sorry and, and read that and use that, but make sure that you don't allow any public comments, because we're not going to open this work session up for any public comment at all.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll at least read the, the first part.
Okay.
And to give everybody a reason for why we're doing it this way.
Perfect.
All right, I do know that RJ has his kids and his wife's working tonight, so bear with him. I think it's dinner time. I already found a couple mistakes, so there's that. What you eating, Karen?
Hello.
What you chewing on?
Granola bar.
Nice. Now RJ's here.
Indeed.
RJ's here, too. Turn up the sound.
Is everybody with us?
I think so.
Hi, Tara.
Hey, Sam.
I'm going to purposely wait till about 6:01 or 2:00. All right, ladies and gentlemen, unless, unless someone stops me, I'm going to call this meeting for the budget work, work session to order at 6:01 on April 20th. And I'm going to read an abbreviated version of the information I had the other day. Pursuant to the Governor Northern's executive orders restricting gatherings of 10 people or more, we will be meeting virtually until the governor deems it safe to return to person, to in-person meetings. Make sure we take turns speaking, speak clearly. Make sure you have an appropriate pause before you begin speaking. If you'd like to welcome any residents who may be joining us tonight, there will be no public comment. And Angela, I hope I didn't leave out anything.
Not that I know of. You ready for me to take it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you all for working through this budget with us in the work session. I apologize for the lateness of getting it out. It was my intention to get it out Saturday, and things didn't go quite that way Saturday. I've changed a few things. I've already found one mistake since I sent it out, based on the mistake I fixed right before I sent it out, so bear with me. We'll go through this. We'll, I'll fix the, any mistakes that we have in here before it goes back out for presentation at our May 11th council meeting. Between now, tonight, and the council meeting, Finance Committee will meet again. They will go over this and give their recommendations to council at the meeting, at the May meeting. All right. Page one is just the table of contents. Page two is where we will include the advertisement. The budget does have to be advertised. If we do decide to put in a, a new tax, like the lodging tax, or change any tax rates, we would have to have a separate public hearing for that. But that, we did budget for a very small lodging tax, just to... And reaction to the short-term rentals, we, if the council wants to include that in the budget, we'll need an ordinance at the May meeting, and then have a public hearing between the May meeting and June. I anticipate having the budget approved and appropriated at the June meeting. I'm not going to read the whole memo that you got, starting on page three. I will come back to page six for the capital projects, because I realized I did not have text like I do with all the other chapter, all the other sections. But if you start on page eight, you'll see the budget summary. That's where I made the mistake. Public safety is really proposed at 672-997. I will fix that and adjust something in the budget before you see it again. As you know, we changed the chart of accounts this year, so it was just almost impossible for us to be able to give you a year-to-year comparison on where we were. It's been a difficult process this year, anyway. Susan and I are not in the office at the same time for safety reasons. So we haven't really been able to sit down and work on this together at all. And then, of course, we've had a rough week, or two, with the loss of two of our council members, so bear with me, if you will. Page eight is a summary, and I'll go through each detailed sheet now. So page nine starts the, the proposed revenues. Starting with the real estate tax, I kept the same. However, the sales tax is lower than the budgeted amount last year. You'll see that we've already received $64,000, but we don't know what the impact for the remainder of this year is, or whether it will go into next quarter. Probably won't, but we reduced it a little bit, anyway. The meals tax was reduced even further. We know that we have three restaurants right now that are not operating that, that used to be. We don't know how quickly they'll be able to come back and how quickly they'll be able to recover. So I basically took a quarter of the meals tax, which is one payment, out of the budget for next year. I did add line 111, an occupancy tax. Again, that is to deal with short-term rentals like Airbnb. Bridgewater has an occupancy tax of 4.5%. I think that's in the memo at the beginning. And then the other taxes that are not based on sales or meals and things like that stay the same. The B-pole tax, which is line 300, we lowered. Again, we don't know what the impact is going to be, but we do know that the business licenses that are due next March are based on this fiscal year, and, and a lot of businesses have been hurt this final quarter of this fiscal year, so we lowered that as well. Vehicle license stayed the same. Most everything else is pretty close. We lowered fines and forfeiture, line 100. I'm sorry, 3140100, because the police aren't as active, and the courts aren't open right now, so that will affect our first quarter of next year. 3140 e-ticket fees, as you know, you all passed an ordinance last year to collect money that goes directly into our electronic policing budget. We will probably have to set up a separate fund for that, or somehow designate that, to make sure that all the money that goes in there gets paid out. It's not a problem this coming year, because we have other expenses going out for electronic ticketing and things, but we will have to keep that separate at some point, but it's here as revenue right now. Let's see, the revenue for the events, date and days, Muddler, Red Bud, remain the same. Waste collection fees went down just a little bit based on where we are right now in the year. We, last year's sale of, I'm sorry, 905, sale of surplus property and equipment, we did not budget for this year. Last year, we sold a couple of vehicles. I'm suggesting that if we get a new police car that we, if it's operating correctly, once the electronics are all taken out of it, that we keep that here for administrative purposes. Let's see. The 103240 law enforcement, those are 599 funds, and that's just based on what we are receiving this year. The state had, last conference I went to, about the state budget, they had planned on really enhancing that fund. I'm sure that's one of the things that's going to get cut out of the state budget. 599 funds have not increased a whole lot in the sense of recession in 2007, and they're trying to build it back up, but I think we're pretty safe staying where we, with what we got this year. Fire programs fund is just a pass-through funding that comes through us to the Bridgewater Fire Department. And then the USD law enforcement would be a grant for a vehicle. We have already been notified that we have received the grant. We have to purchase a vehicle if we use it by October. And we can get into a little bit more discussion, or I can take it to Finance Committee, but there are some vehicles available right now at the price that we quoted at the priority budget session. If we, if council would like to commit to that vehicle now, we can put one on hold and have it here, and pay for it out of the grant, and not have to buy the next year's model, which may be more expensive. DMV grant has been added. That would be a highway safety program. Justin has applied for $40,000 for highway safety. That's just extra patrol, so you'll see in the police budget that we've increased part-time and overtime, and that would be reflected in the grant that we would receive. Obviously, if we don't receive that grant, we'll take overtime and part-time back down, or if we receive a portion, we'll change, we'll note that in the budget. And then finally, the transfer from water and sewer went up just slightly. But you'll notice, as we go through the budget, that we are proposing that we pay outright for the equipment for the water plant. The capital revenue is just a transfer for everything except for the water plant equipment that's in the capital budget for this year. And then the use of the reserve budget only is for the equipment. That would be coming out of investments. It's labeled that way because investments have already been received as revenue, so we can't double count it, but for budget purposes, we show it as revenue coming over from the investments. And the 20 fund, the water and sewer, stays pretty similar. I don't know why there's a... Okay, yep, and that's it. So our total revenue is shown at $7,418, and... Make sure that's not the previous version. Why did I say that? Yes. Seven four... Seven four one eight nine four four.
You're on page 12, correct?
Yes. The end of page 12. So before I get started, are there any questions about the revenue, any comments, things that you'd like us to consider revisiting?
So the Muddler looks like it had a revenue, revenue of 6 million?
No.
Is that a typo? Page 10?
It says 60,000. Oh, yeah, that's, sorry. That's a typo. Sorry.
Thought so.
I don't know where that came from.
And then I, I circled some things as I was going through, and then, then got to the notes and didn't have the time to circle back to them. But I saw that the miscellaneous expenses, 10318, 990 on page 10, seems like a pretty significant angry, oh, an increase in, in that. Revenue, so that's a, that's a good thing. I'm curious where that, that high of an increase came from.
It's the same, you're talking about 990?
Yeah, it was 10,000, and then...
Oh, no, that, that's probably another typo. That's, that's, I'm sure another type.
And that's this year, not next year's budget.
Actually, it's not a typo. That is, this year's actual, and that's because we received... Is that the sale of all the weapons and things, Susan? Can you read? Do you know? I'm sorry, I didn't give you notes on the revenue. Anyway, there was a bunch of miscellaneous income this year, but I took it back down to 10,000 for next...
Yeah, and I, and that's this year, so it's not really as relevant to those conversations, I thought, so, sorry.
Okay, no. All right, any other questions or comments about the revenue before we get into the expenditures? I'm sorry, I didn't, I had my whole thing up here, so everybody could see what we were talking about. All right, we'll go to the expenditures, then, starting with general government and administration. You'll see that...
Page thirteen?
Yeah. Page fourteen, thirteen, yes.
Fourteen.
Yes, and then the notes start on page 15. So you'll see throughout this budget that I have not put in a salary increase for employees this year, and I did not talk to personnel about that. If council chooses, we would greatly appreciate it, but I did reach out to other localities, and I know Bridgewater is not giving any salary increases. The county isn't giving salary increases. Elkton was going to. They're probably going down to zero in Newmarket, the same way, Luray. There's a couple that are still planning on giving up, but I thought council probably wanted to be sensitive to the fact that other people are laid off and not working right now. What I would suggest is that if, if we don't give salary increases now that we revisit the revenue and see if we're back on target, and if we can give salary increases in, starting in January. People had merit increases in January this year, so I know a couple localities are planning on probably having to amend their budget, anyway, and are planning on looking at that halfway through the year. Any comments about that? Not from the staff. Council members. All right, we'll work down the budget, then. Obviously, the staff includes...
Jeff, were you saying something? Doesn't look like your mic was on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, no, that seems, that seems reasonable to me. I mean, we're, yeah. We can, we can revisit it later on, but I'm okay with that to begin with.
I mean, our staff is very hardworking, as you know, and very dedicated, and I hate not to do that, but I also understand that our revenues are going to see a big drop, and, and we have a lot of infrastructure projects, so... The wages for general administration include me, the treasurer, the account tech one, account tech two, and a portion of the administrative assistant clerk. Oops, and I forgot to put in all of, and the, all of the part-time administrative assistant. I'll fix those notes. Overtime in this category reflects Krista staying for evening meetings. And then part-time is our new part-time administrative assistant. Who I guess I, oh, that goes down on, yeah, line 102. So I didn't make a mistake. She's down 102. Bonuses, we, that's for the whole, all the staff. We normally give a Christmas bonus, and that's what's the actual this year, so I would assume it'd be the same next year because we have the same amount of staff. Salary count, salaries for council, you'll see we're already over budget this year, but that's because we've been taking planning commission and BZA out of that line item, and we shouldn't. So I held council salaries study, and we all moved planning commission and BZA. We're going to do journal entry anyway and fix that for this year, and, and you'll see when we get over to community development that we moved it over there again. FICA is just based on on the percentage, and employee benefits includes not only health benefits, but the VRS contribution that we make for each employee. Last year, I think Joe put it all in general government, but because when we do a paycheck, it all goes out into each and according to the same formula that our, the paychecks do, so we've split that back out by department. So it's lower here, but it'd be a higher in all the other departments. Professional services includes our cleaning service, security system maintenance, getting another facilitator in to do a short session for council, and then we had talked about getting a consultant in to do rate study for our water and sewer rates and our tax structure and looking at whether or not we can come up with a way to basically keep fees and taxes the same, but make it more equitable so that we're collecting taxes to go into the general fund rather than moving the water sewer over all the time. So I split that money between this professional services and the water sewer department. Legal services are the attorney. And my notes are wrong on there. I added a little bit more. So we have, the budget was 90,000. We brought that down a little bit, but recently with some of the issues that we've had Jason working on, it's going up a little bit, so I just put 90. I'm hoping we don't spend that much. IT services includes VTG, which is our IT consulting firm, Southern Software, which is our accounting software. We did put some money in for a website redesign in the first year's annual fee, and that would be $6,500. That's a website that will be targeted towards that, a company that does a lot of government websites, and it will be more targeted towards that. Vehicle maintenance, I put in $1,000, assuming that we may, if, if the council chooses to fund the police grant, then we would keep that vehicle if it's running, like I said, and then we could use it and here instead of paying everybody for mileage when they go to conferences and things. Career development just includes all the professional organization conferences. Krista's been attending the municipal clerks' functions. Encouraging Susan to go to the Virginia Government Finance Officers Association. We did have an employee who took two online classes and got reimbursed for that this year, according to our policy, and then any council training. Newly elected officials and things like that. We will have quite a few people coming on council this year, so I hope that some people will want to go through training. Advertising is just job advertisements, public hearing, and of course, we have to advertise this budget. So that's what makes up that. Postal dues and subscription, those things are pretty well. Standard communications is the office phones and the cell phones, and those are based on actual expenses this year. Insurance, you'll, you'll see, we, and you know that we've been over budget in every category this year. We still have not gotten our premium for Versa to see what it is, but what you see on the actual column is, we pay that at the beginning of the year for the whole year. So I did add in, in every department, a little bit of cushion in case they go up a little bit, but I'm hoping they don't go up too much. And hopefully, by the May meeting, we'll have our premium. We haven't seen anything from them yet. Equipment rental stays about the same. That includes our postage machine and our server rental. You'll see that we're a little bit over budget already for that, and that's because we've been, they've been taking out the lease for the copiers out of equipment rental, and really, that's, I believe, what 801 is down at the bottom of the page, the capital lease. So we're going to move that out, and that's how we'll budget it for next year. Office supplies, materials and supplies, office equipment, or the equipment, which is just office equipment, those are all standard and in line where we're, where they were last year, or a little bit lower. Same for miscellaneous. Like I say, we'll we base the capital lease on our lease. So that takes our total expenditures in that department to 566990. Are there any questions on general government administration? Any comments or questions? I'm sharing my screen, so I can't really see everybody, so. I'll move on then. If nobody has questions, we'll go to public safety. This budget looks like it went up more, but several of the items are based on getting grants, and as I said, we will not spend the money if we do not get the grants. Salary and wages is reflective of where we are. Again, with no salary increases, overtime and part-time went up because of the application we put in for the DMV highway safety grant. That will be adjusted if need be. We still do sometimes need overtime or part-time officers. We've got, we're fully staffed if everybody's here, but a lot of people have annual leave or they're out sick or whatever, so. We, we do anticipate having some overtime and part-time, but not as much as we had this year. FICA, again, is just the formula. Employee benefits are based on this year, and we added the VRS, as I mentioned before, where we took it out of the other, so that's where that is.
So pause there, Angela. That, that seems to be like most of the, well, no, most of the large increases in the budgets by department are not really large increases. It's moving the money there and then paying that out of that department's budget. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I think it, it looks, it looks like a bigger change than it is. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah. So the employee benefits went up everywhere except for the general administration and the insurance, because we were over budget this year, but the other things in the police department, like I say, are because we applied for that grant.
Is a part administrative person reflected in the, the public safety?
No, but Krista still does some hours there, but not as much as she was doing before, because we assume that pretty soon the judge will start allowing us not to have to put in tickets manually. Right now, the judge still has us putting in the tickets manually. Right now, nobody's really writing tickets, but that'll come back up. Legal services, I think I mentioned to you all before that if we arrest somebody that needs a public defender, we pay for the public defender. So we, we bumped that up also.
But then you're
I'm sorry, the professional ser, what's that?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but in your, in your review, your first narrative, it says, "The budget as presented allocates the following full-time positions to the function, a portion of the administrative assistant and then the officers."
Right.
So we're, we aren't putting the administrative assistant under the
I'm sorry, Krista, Krista is called the clerk zoning and administrative assistant, so I was speaking of the full-time administrative assistant. And so she comes out of salaries. If the part-time person was doing it, she would come out of part-time, but
So the only, the only one we're paying for the part-time assistant is the 17,000 for the general?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We didn't, we don't have it in her job applicant, or in the job position statement right now that she would even do events, but we can revisit that as well. So there's nothing in, in events as well.
Yeah, I just was confused. Yeah, so, so the administrative assistant for the public safety is Krista, and assistant part-time is this other person just in the general fund, or just
Right.
Okay.
That's right. So professional services on line 300, this year, we always have some money in there. This year, we had to pay for an interpreter when somebody got arrested that didn't speak English. It's things like that. Legal services, like I said, is public defender. IT services has extra money in it this year because that includes the Tyler maintenance fee for our records management system, the new system that they have with the laptops in the cars, and it also would include storage for the body cam if we get the body cam, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, too. That was also another grant that was applied for. Vehicle maintenance, about the same. Career development goes up just a little bit.
Is that Tyler cost a recurring cost each year?
Yes.
Okay, so both that and the storage of the body camera would be, would be recurring costs?
Yes.
I know there's some changes to the, the fee structure on the body camera over the couple of years, and we don't need to get into that now, but that will be higher from now on for this, this area.
Yes, yes. And you'll see that this, we budgeted 1,000 last year, and then there was 3270 spent this year, but then we're getting we're getting a refund because we had already put the new system in shortly after the fiscal year started. They wouldn't just give us a refund, though, so they're prorating next year's system, or our Southern Software is going to prorate our overall fee next year, so we'll come back and make adjustments when we see how that's going to work out. All right, career development is a little bit higher. Justin has been going to conferences both for the Police Chiefs Association as well as accreditation process that we're going through. Advertising is primarily job advertisements, or we did a little bit of advertising for the Coffee with a Cop and Cone with a Cop events. What we're hoping to do is out of the Muddler, set up a community police fund and pay for those extras, things like that, out of that fund separate from our budget, but we don't have that set up yet, so I just continue to carry that over. Dues and subscriptions has dropped a little bit just based on what we anticipate coming up. Communications is phones. It increases here because with the new RMS system, we need Verizon Air cards, and those are about $40 a month, and each car, each officer will need those. Technology's not cheap. Insurance, again, is reflective of what we think it will be this year.
Angela, on the insurance, what kind of decrease should we expect with accreditation, or do we know?
Justin, are you on? Can you answer that? Was it a 5% or something?
Yeah, um, Versa does it. I can get you the exact figure, but I think it is around a 5% reduction once accreditation has been achieved. But obviously, with COVID, accreditation has kind of come to a slow slow go, because you can't have assessors come out and assess your policies. They can't come out and assess your property evidence room, so. So it's put us a little behind getting accredited right now.
But we're still thinking that's going to be done next fiscal year?
Yeah, the goal was to have it done by end of summer, but obviously, that's not going to happen. So I'm hoping by the first of the year. Because I need to do a mock assessment before we actually go through the full assessment. The mock assessment tells us where we need to improve or if we have any issues before we go through the full assessment, so we don't go through full assessment and we get denied, and then we only have a certain period of time to fix our errors to get accredited.
Also, this year, in the past, staff has not taken advantage, at least recently, of the 5% reduction we can see in insurance if we fill out our risk assessment form, and we did do that on time this year, so we should see somewhat of a decrease, but because our insurance has been going up. We have a couple outstanding workers comp claims and things, and those will go away in about a year or two, so hopefully, we'll see that drop back down again. And that insurance, I'm sure you all know, is all the liability coverages that we have, both on the buildings, the vehicles, they cover council and staff and fraud and everything else, cybersecurity. So it's a pretty comprehensive policy. Equipment rental includes a portion of the server, let's see, equipment rental's 510, portion of the server. Office supplies is based on current year. Materials and supplies did go up quite a bit because we would like to purchase a gun safe. And ammunition, and most of that is ammunition, which is really expensive, and we need to get people back in training. Free arms training.
Is that related to accreditation, Justin? The storage of the weapons in a safe?
Yes, yeah, currently, we don't have, um, it's a, it's a metal cabinet. I mean, I could pull it as hard as I could and probably pop it open, no issue, so we need to get a gun safe to securely, to appropriately secure the weapons that we have in the storage.
And then 620 is police uniforms. We talked at the priority session, I think. There are some officers, Reggie's been here several years, and he still has the two pair of pants that he started with, so we just need to get some updated uniforms for some of the folks. Miscellaneous is the same, and the Bridgewater Fire, as I said, has just passed through money, so you saw it in revenue, and there it is in expense. And then the capital lease is the lease department copier rental. Those leases are up in about another year. I'll start looking this year. A lot of times, a copier company will buy somebody out and and offer a cheaper copier price, so we'll start looking at that this year. All right, so there's a total on the expenses there. They went up, but like I said, we've talked about why they went up for that department. Any questions or concerns on that?
I'd like to talk for a minute about the Muddler event and the funds, but we know how that's going to be accounted for and spent. So the, the part of those proceeds will come back to the police department?
So we're going to be, yeah, we're going to be the fiscal agent, and so we'll bring in all the revenue and pay the bills, and then with the proceeds, we'll split it three ways between the town, which, like I said, we'd like to put in a separate fund so that we can re, and then following years, we would have some deposit money and stuff. And then it would be spent with the Harrisonburg Police Foundation and this year, Bridgewater Fire. Every year, that third partner would switch off.
Okay, so you set up a, an account to receive those funds that the town will get on that event?
Yeah, so you can set up a separate fund so that it can carry over from year to year and be spent on events and special things.
So then we need to, that needs to come along with what that's actually to be used for, because with our past experience and spending and some ethics involvement, I would not want to see an account up there just open for, with really no, no rules on that for stuff, you know, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I think
I thought it was, I thought it was going towards the police department. Is that
Yes, yeah, but one of the things we were looking at doing, depending on how much comes in, is, you know, we're going to start doing the neighborhood watch event, a large event, and and paying for the Coffee with Cop and things like that, rather than taking it out straight out of our budget. We would certainly account for it, and you could get the accounting separate for that fund every month or quarter at your meetings as well.
But that's going to be included in the town's budget, since it's money we're going to be bringing in. It's not going to be a completely side account.
Yeah, this, this year, we've set it up just like we have in the past years. Yeah, this this year we've set it up just like we have in the past years because we haven't established anything yet or really know what we want to do with that. But at some point it's, you know, like the foundation is going to hold it rather than the police department. But yes, we would account for it. It would still be town of Dayton money and we'd still be responsible the same way we are with everything else. It would just set that aside, but we don't have to do it that way. We can take it in. The problem is when you take it in, then you spend it and you don't have anything for the following year to to spend. This was a way really to eventually get Muddler completely out of our budget if we can and start paying for things out of that separate fund and then getting reimbursed out of that separate fund.
But the problem, the muddy water is you're still it's the you're still town run town. I mean, to get this completely out of the town is you set up a separate entity of five one three C, have a board run it and they do it all. So with the town involved in it. I mean, you're we're still going to have town involvement, town funds, and it's still going to be kind of intermingled together. It's not going to be a separate thing. You have after five years have forty thousand dollars in this account just kind of there for whatever somebody wants to use it for.
Well, we can keep it in the town in the town budget as well and and reflect those expenses in the budget and then
I don't know.
And the applet and the applications are gonna this year. They're going to come really, really fast and all of a sudden.
Well, they will because somebody's going to want to be able to do something. I mean, if we if we're let loose and whatever and this things, we can actually have the event. Yeah, people have been sitting in the house forever and need something to do or going to come flooding in. But then again, we could be not being able to put this event on when it comes around, too. You never know.
So for the purposes of this year, the budget purposes are the same as they have been in terms of revenue and expenses.
I'm just when we when we need to, I guess, we could have this deeper conversation when you and I and Carrie meet about because I want to make sure this gets set up right and and problem down the road.
Yeah.
Proper controls on it. It's not a side fund. It's town money. It should be in the budget like normal. You're going to expect this much to come in. You're expect to spend this much. And it's other stuff. If you're going to put it in a separate reserve account, then you know, something that that it's got locked down. So if if the regime changes and some new people come in and then you don't know what's going to happen if it's not properly policyed. So
Okay.
I'm just kind of nervous about that.
This may be getting too into the weeds on it, but perhaps it could be a sort of thing where there are certain types of events or functions of that that can be used by that account without, you know, further approval from council or something like that, but anything over X amount or that is outside of you know, these three events or these general uses, you know, needs to be run by council or something.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, we'll go to page twenty one, which is Public Works then. All right, salaries again are reflective where we are and what we're currently paying people with no salary increase, except this is the one area both here in the water plant. When Lucas passes his test, as you know, he went up, he passes class four, but he's still a trainee. When he classes passes his class three, then he'll move up to a water operator. He expects to test in about six months, but it's hard to say because a lot of things have been put off. Overtime for Public Works assumes that we're going to have snow this year. We didn't, as you see, use very much of it last year. Part time, we are adding back in. You'll see that went up. And I had talked to Joe about it. He didn't understand that Conrad ever did Public Works. He thought he was only at the water plant. Conrad's not working right now for us all because he's our backup if if the crew gets sick, but also because we spent over our budget. But in the past, he has mode and things like that. As you know, Addison has left and Seth is coming in and working full time during the summer and once things get back to normal and we can interview and get somebody in, we will do that as well. In the meantime, we would still like to look at getting somebody into do landscaping since we can't use the inmates at this point. FICA employee benefits same as as we've talked about and all the other departments. Vehicle maintenance is going up just a little bit to reflect where we've been or what we're doing these days. Contract services is about the same. When we're allowed to have CPR training again. I will do that and contract services includes that and I didn't put all the other things it includes, but I'll go back and add that. So three fifty maintenance service contracts. In the past, we've had somebody come in and they vary anywhere from thirty five hundred to six thousand dollars to re stripe, repaint the yellow curbs downtown and re stripe the parking lots. They do just downtown every other year and then the whole town. It got expensive. The company is not exceptionally easy to work with. So we're actually looking at purchasing some new equipment to be able to to use instead of using a contractor every year. Yeah, we'll use in-house people and probably can even use inmates once they are able to come back out again and work. We also need to, they're just, you're probably seeing they flake off as soon as they paint them because they don't do any pressure washing or scraping or anything. So most of the yellow paint's already come off from Dayton days. Solid Waste Collections is gone up just a little bit because we have several new houses that have become an onboard. Crew development has gone down a little bit because they have not used it. They do a lot of the career development they do is online through Versa, our insurance company. And then the other is in the Water and Sewer Department for the licensing and stuff. Advertising, same, it went down. We'll advertise a job and things, but they don't have much need for advertisement. I did add dues and subscriptions in. I want to move some of the licenses and certificates that have been and other accounts down to dues and subscriptions. Their professional organization stuff. Communications is phones. Again, that's more reflective of what we anticipate it will be next year. Utilities. I'm not sure why it was budgeted at that amount and why they're so much lower unless we've changed the way that we're accounting for it, but we budgeted for twenty thousand and that's based on where we are, the average month times twelve months. And then insurance, we've talked about. You'll, they've already gone over budget this year, so we are increasing it. I know fuel prices are down now, but we don't know what's going to happen with this economy. So we're assuming fuel prices will be what they have been historically for the past year. And then did I forget some things? I forgot to put materials and supplies and I apologize. Add that back in.
It's on the next page, Angela.
It is? It's not on my next page. I see safety equipment, but I don't see materials and supplies. Huh.
Eighty five seventy five.
Eighty five seventy five.
That's interesting. Okay. Not there. All right. Anyway, does it say what it's for? Or why it decreased?
You have materials, supplies, safety equipment and sidewalk repair.
Yeah, I have that on the budget. I'm looking for the notes. I mean, I don't have it on the notes. I'll add it. I'll add in. I've I, right now, I don't remember why it decreased so much this year, but I know there was a something we we bought there that we don't need to buy this year.
Yeah, it wasn't included in the notes.
It's not?
No.
Yeah, no, I know. I'll I'll include it and find out why that's like that. Safety equipment, they haven't spent a whole lot. I do want them to buy some chaps for when they're using their chainsaws. We don't have any right now, but also wanted to get them some new shirts. They wear those yellow shirts right now. They're staying. They're awful looking. They don't represent the town very well. So we'll include that with safety equipment because most of them have to have the bright class shirt with the striping on it, but we'll get them.
We all, we bought them all those Carhartt jackets the other year. So I guess new people coming in, they would need to get one as well.
Oh, okay.
You know, so when they're out there, because I would go out there in the wintertime, they'd be just wearing old ratty hoodies or whatever. So but a year or two ago, we bought them town of Dayton Carhartt jackets. They've got embroidered on the chest, so.
Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so just keep in mind we have turnover.
Okay. So I should have started out by saying you don't have the CIP yet and I apologize for that, but this year we put in another thirty thousand for sidewalk repair and install. That was based on Russell's measuring and figuring out the fees that he gave for priority session. That would include college. It's got three openings. We are still talking about maybe closing off that one alley and making it a pedestrian way. But anyway, it would be taking out the sidewalks and rebuilding on college. All right, and that's Public Works. Are there any questions or comments on that?
The alleyway that you're talking about, is that right there beside the business?
Right, right next to you?
Yeah.
I think so. I guess you guys have been talking about making that a pedestrian way or?
I mean, I talked to him, I don't know, it's been like a year ago, but I think more study done on that as well because there are tenants and people that live up there and use that for going in and out.
Okay, sure. Yeah, that's just what I had heard. Obviously, we haven't started working on that project yet. All right. Anything else on Public Works? And we'll go back and add a little bit of that before. Right, next is Parks and Recreation. That budget actually went down a little bit, but it's still on target with where we were for this year. Salary is the same as in all my other reports and the overtime. I should explain is actually overtime for when our public work, well, Mike's allotted twelve hours on the week of the event only because he has to, you know, the the final week leading up is pretty hectic and then you have to work the whole day. But it also covers the public work staff who have to come in and work overtime. And that's Muddler only falls under Parks and Recreation or the concerts. Russell comes in and helps sets up for the concerts sometimes. Part time for Parks and Recreation, that's a reflection of public work staff mowing the parks and and participating in event, the Muddler related events and things like that. And when we say part time, it's really, even though Seth works full time seasonal, he falls under that as does Conrad. FICA is the same, same for the benefits. That went up quite a bit, but again, we're moving that money around from a different department. Contracted services went down quite a bit. Just based on where we are this year. Career development hasn't been utilized, so it it has gone down. Advertisement has gone down or I'm sorry, advertisement has been thrown in. We had advertisement and community development, but we do need some advertisement for the events as well. And that's been coming out of other line items, I think, as it gets communications is just a cell phone. Utilities gets charged. But those are just the utilities in the parks. Insurance again. Rental equipment is primarily for events and or for the mother and concerts and things like that and then materials and supplies. So the overall.
So the Muddler is just kind of mushed in with all these other accounts. It's not a separate.
Yeah, no, it used to be a separate account and I guess last year or a few years ago, they put it in with Parks and Recreation. Joe's understanding Joe didn't want to put it in with community development, I guess, because it's more recreational than it is. It's not a way to attract people downtown. I had looked at moving it back out of Parks and Recreation, but I left it in there. We've had so many changes this year. I didn't want to confuse it even more.
So you're going to keep a separate list to know how much we're actually spending on that event, I guess?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what we did this year. They have codes now that they put in the description instead of spelling out Muddler or something because the type of you can't pull it. They're just putting, I think, MD in there in the description. And then when we need to query a report and pull it up, they can pull up just the Muddler expenses. It has still come out with those line item accounts, but it'd be just Muddler expenses. And that's how we gave you that report at the end of of the Muddler last year. Same thing. We just cleaned up the.
Who's cellphone is under under Parks and Recs?
I think part of Mike's. I think.
Okay.
I don't know, Susan, do you know how those are divided up? I don't know. She might be muted.
Sorry, yeah. No, that's Mike's cellphone.
Okay. A portion of it and I think you'll see it on the other budget as well. All right, any questions for Parks and Recreation? If not, we will move to community development. Community development includes Red Bud Dayton Days Autumn Celebration and then economic development activities. I should have said the concerts fell under Parks and Recreation. Community development includes the two big signature events and then other economic development. So looking at salaries and wages, we got rid of the part time. Sheila won't be working on the events anymore. I guess that was the purpose of you hiring a person full time. There is some part time or overtime in there for Public Works employees and Mike. So this is where Planning Commission and BZA should have been coming out of this year and like I said, we'll fix that going forward. So we do need to have a little discussion here. Planning Commission has been receiving a hundred dollars a month whether or not they meet and they don't meet very often. The BZA gets, I believe, twenty five dollars a month and they rarely meet. Most other localities don't pay the BZA at all and others only pay their planning commissioners when they attend meetings. So and I had discussed that briefly with one of the committees. And wanted to.
I think it was personnel. Yeah, I think it was personnel that you talked about it and and I was like, that's not really personnel, so let's bring it to to council on their thoughts. And I think in that meeting, we had said that our thought was to go along with kind of what other towns do and and reduce that pay like you just outlined.
Yeah, it wasn't budgeted properly this year anyway, so I don't know if that's what Joe was thinking that they only got paid for meetings because you see it was only budgeted for thirty two forty and it would be twice that. Which has been coming out of General Admin, but when we move it over, that'd be over budget and then BZA, I don't know where it was supposed to be budgeted, but and he may not have even been aware that we paid BZA. So other other input on that?
No, and we talked about that briefly in finance. I think that once they have a meeting, they should get paid for that, but if there's no meetings, there's no reason for them to be compensated. Just increase the amount of what the meeting is going to be.
I agree with that.
More than a hundred dollars a meeting? What I
What do other towns pay?
Uh, anywhere from seventy five to a hundred, I think, except for I think Bridgewater pays more. I polled the localities quite a while ago. I think it was anywhere from fifty to a hundred per meeting. I think we were the only one who pays whether they come or not. Only one other locality pays for, or I don't know that anybody paid for, one paid for their EDA members. But I did check with Jason on the legality of paying BZA members because they're appointed by the court and they're supposed to be a neutral body, but he did in fact say that we could pay BZA if we wanted to, but I don't have them budgeted at all. I can adjust that figure if need be.
I don't think we need to increase the pay. If we're, I don't think we need to increase them pay if we are paying them only when they meet. I think we should pay them what they get now if they meet. That's just my thought.
Well, that is based, that's the assumption there is that there's planning commissions fully staffed and they're only meeting every other month and they would get a hundred dollars per meeting.
And that's fair.
And that's fair. I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The advertising's down quite a bit. We had twenty-one thousand, the current budget, we're spending ten. Is that, does that have to do with the sign project we had going on?
Yes, yes, I, yeah, I haven't gotten that far yet, but yes. Let me, let me keep going down. So, three oh two, other services is down a little bit. We have taken out, this year, we paid for an anniversary gift, because it was the fortieth anniversary of Dayton Days. We also have in the past paid for Christmas ornaments and then resold them. I believe Tara, is somebody gonna take that, or the mill, or somebody's gonna take that over, right?
Hmm, I have no idea. Hopefully.
Okay. Okay, so that got lowered a little bit. The contracted services went up because, and it went over budget this year. We, just with all the safety concerns at large events now, we hired flaggers and more police patrol, especially at Dayton Days where there's so many people, and we anticipate having to do that again. We are gonna use, Justin has a great contact, and I don't know if he's on mute or not, but whether or not they have agreed to do it. But I do believe there's a group that will be coming in and helping us to do some of that as well, flagging and security.
I emailed them, and I'm just waiting to hear back.
Okay.
I'm sure they're waiting on what's gonna happen with everything right now in the world, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so career development stays the same. That is where we take out planning commissioners who go to training, BZA training. Krista, I mean, Mike can use it too. Krista and Heidi are going through planning commissioners training. Krista's going through BZAs, so those all come out of there, because it's related to community development. Advertising did go down because that twenty-five thousand dollar sign program.
So is that not gonna be continued? We're not gonna, this budget year, are we?
I'm in conversation now, so I didn't know that Shelley had already gone through a whole process with some contractors and consultants. So I just by chance touched base with the one that she had gone through. So if we, if we don't get it completed, we will at least have it started. I got an extension through June thirtieth, but I let the woman know that because of this COVID, we might need another extension. But we can still charge it off on this year, as long as we get it started.
Okay, so if we get it started, we can use this money that we had earmarked for that?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah. Yeah, it's grant funding, so it can carry over.
So we don't need to include that money into this year's budget?
No, it'd be, it'd be reflected here in the actual, once we spend it, or it'd be charged back to this year. On a cruel, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I could have sworn I wrote that note somewhere, but it's not on here, so I will have that note. And then down at the bottom, there's donations. Last year, we budgeted for ten thousand, so far we've given fifty-three hundred. We have budgeted for Fort Harrison to get fifteen hundred, for the Historical Society to get thirty-five hundred. For some reason, the budget has the VFW getting three hundred, but that's for Dayton Days, and probably should be somewhere else, because other events are too. I was contact, as you know, Habitat contacted us and wrote a letter wanting basically a donation in the amount of their connection fees for the house across the street. I let him know this week that this is a really tight budget year for us, and I wasn't sure what you wanted to do. But if you want me to take the three hundred for the VFW out and put it under a different category, more related to Dayton Days, we would still have up to a thousand dollars to give to Habitat, if you so choose. Any feedback on that?
I don't have a particular thought either way on strongly.
Okay.
I think my, I would lean towards not doing it.
Okay.
Just because I wouldn't want the precedent to get set, but then we always have to do it. So.
Okay.
But that's just me.
Okay, well, we can leave that extra thousand dollars in there, and if somebody comes up with a really compelling ask, or we can move it somewhere else. Any other questions or comments on community development?
Hey Angela, I was looking through, I didn't see the facade enhancement.
You know, I just.
Solid grant.
I just wrote myself a note on that, so I completely didn't fund that this year. Is that something that council wants to do? The facade grant this year, which I think was ten thousand dollars to help businesses. There's guidelines already written for how the money can be spent.
Yeah, I'd like to see that continued. I was not happy when it was taken out last year.
Okay, well.
Yeah, that's a good benefit for business owners downtown.
Tara, what do you think about that?
Um, yeah, Todd and I both shared our thoughts with Angela for that. I mean, you have the, Suzie Swecker is gonna be purchasing the salon, and Jack and Brenda have the. I just think it's a good thing to do, give back to the business owners downtown, help them out a little bit.
Yeah, I apologize, that is an oversight on mine. I will adjust, and I will find the money. I think I know where I can find it, but, okay.
I'm for it based on what everyone else said.
Pardon me?
I'm for it based on what the other council member said.
Okay. All right, then, we'll go on to capital projects. Like I said, I didn't give you text, but there's some text up in the memo. And it's basically what was brought to your attention, or the priority session. Like I said, we already been told that we have received a grant if we want to use it for the police vehicle. The grant would be twenty-five thousand dollars, so our portion would be twenty thousand five hundred and eighty. I'm recommending that we take advantage of that grant now, we're gonna need the car anyway.
So then why wouldn't that, that amount just be twenty thousand five eighty instead of forty-five thousand five eighty?
Because that's the capital expense for the whole vehicle, but back in revenue, you saw where there was twenty-five thousand dollars coming in.
Okay.
That makes it complicated to understand, but that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. But it probably makes sense to move forward with the current year, instead of having to pay next year's model prices.
Well, so we can do that, and Justin can put in a PO, but we would need pretty much a guarantee from council that you're gonna approve that section of the budget before we sign a PO and tell them to go forward.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Okay, well, we can't take official action, but we can start doing that, and we'll bring it up at the May meeting.
Yeah.
And, okay, and, okay. Very good. The water plant equipment, as you know, is supposed to be about one point six million dollars. I have it, us paying for all the equipment by the end of the next fiscal year. It's paid out in installments, but I think we will move forward with that. The deadline for applying for financing through the state has been extended because of the COVID thing. So we'll, we're still planning on applying for financing for the construction in, by middle of May. This would be, you saw back in revenue that we had, that we'll just be transferring all that money out of investments. That still leaves us well over the two point four million dollars that is called for in our finance committee, or in our finance policies to have on reserve. And that reserve, as you recall, is, is set there primarily in case something happens to cargo. Even after we spend this, we should have eight months of cargo water bills if need be. And then Mill Street completion project should be sorted this year. We'll spend the hundred twenty-five that's in there, and then this is another hundred twenty-five. I just blew that, it's supposed to, yeah, it's a four, it's supposed to be a four hundred thousand dollar project. Our cut would be two hundred thousand, but we need extra, because the grant didn't cover right away acquisition and engineering. And then I have added in the King Street Extension Path, which would provide a safe way for people to connect between college and Main Street. We already have a lot of it right away. I just need to talk to the landowner down there and see if she would be willing to let us go on the edge of her property, rather than having to build a bridge over the creek there.
So this is to solve our problems with Dayton Days, so people can?
Yeah, so people can safely get from one to the other. As you know, last year, Mr. Kugler made his own bridge. It wasn't, I think even though it was on his own property, he had signs up, and it was our event that we are probably liable for that.
Yeah. So this is by the pit stop, then, is it?
This is over by the apartment. It goes right along Duff Park, between Duff Park and those apartments there. So there's a small section of road, Ms. Lowe's property, it goes down there. There's a small section of road that goes down to the house there, and then it's designated as our right of way, but it's never, a road's never been built.
So we're gonna pave that area and make it a walking path to?
I think we'll pave it, probably gravel or some, some stuff.
And it'll let you out on the south side of the bridge.
Right, by the, by the pit stop there, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was going from the other direction, yeah.
Okay, so it'll let you out there, so we can come, come to big festivals, we can direct people that way, instead of walking up and down Everly.
Right, yeah, that's the whole purpose, yeah, keep people safe.
Fifteen thousand seems a lot for a gravel road, is that all we're doing is a gravel?
Well, it's legal fees, and some kind of compensation if we're allowed to use her property, rather than to build a bridge and things like that. Otherwise, it's ten thousand dollars for a bridge, and then the legal fees and stuff.
Right, right.
The problem is, I've talked to Mr. Kugler, that if you went straight down King Street, he's got a fence. I shared the plot with him, because he wasn't even sure where the property lines were, but he's got a fencer. It's the widest part of the creek, it would just be easier if we can talk to the landowner and see if we can swing around on the side of the creek.
Yeah.
Just have to worry about ramping up to get to Main Street.
Yeah, I'm still envision people still walking up and down Everly, just because they're too lazy to walk back down the street to go across. We'll do our best to come that way.
Well, if we have, we can put up barriers and stuff, but.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so water and sewer, the twenty fund. Again, salaries have gone up just a little bit there because of Lucas testing this year. Overtime went up a little bit, well, there was no overtime budgeted last year, which is strange, because the guys who work at the plant have to go in on the weekends. And then part-time was reduced a little bit, because we haven't used that as much. Again, Joe budgeted all of Conrad's hours. I think he looked at Conrad's hours, knew he worked at the water plant, and budgeted them all for water and sewer, even though we charge it by what activity he's doing. And so some of his money goes out of Parks and Rec if he's milling. All right, same with all the others. So the professional services line three hundred, I'm sorry for the public watching, let me go back down to that budget. Line three hundred, professional services includes the other portion of the water sewer rate study and water. I'm sorry, I didn't change my note, I didn't change my notes on this, so ignore that note. It includes a portion of the engineering going forward with the water plant. The engineering and the engineering that we got as part of the preliminary engineering study, they figured it on a rate that would be much higher. They did it on the standard rate, they have assured me if we continue to use our firm, it'd be much cheaper. Plus, I think some of it, we can finance as well, but I wanted to get started. Going that route. Going down to contractual services. That, that's gone down, because that included a large portion of the SCADA project. But what I do have for contractual services this year is to finish those, a couple of components for the SCADA project. To finish well, number four, we may try to get that done this year still out of the water plant upgrade budget that hasn't been spent, but we might have missed our chance to get that done this year. Esri annual contract is twenty-two hundred dollars, the GIS locator is two thousand dollars. Which I don't even think. Miss utility and other. Career development includes their CEUs, Esri and Virginia Rural Water Association conferences and trainings. Do some subscriptions to water plant-related things. And then materials and supplies. Six oh five. Water meter replacements, chemicals, filters, install stuff, gravel, other, and flow meter. Equipment six-ten has gone up because, or has a, that's where we included some backflow prevention equipment and the GIS locator that we had talked about previously. I did talk to the PDC, I had a conference call with Hunter and Adam, and what we need to do for our mapping is not in their capacity to do it. So they are gonna do the hydrant study, mapping the hydrants and getting us started, but they can't do all the lines like we would. And because we don't know exactly where our lines are, I think it's a good investment to go ahead and buy the GIS locator and pay the, pay that annual fee until we don't need to pay the annual fee anymore. You only have to pay the annual fee if you're actually using that service at that time. So once we get everything mapped, hopefully, we won't have to do that. Miss Lanius. That's in the wrong, wrong budget, because I paid some of my moving expenses, but that was, that should be under administration, I'll move that over. And then capital lease equipment includes, it's also in. Those two bottom notes on page thirty-four are supposed to be there, sorry about that. So then we, but what I didn't put was the rest of the notes, I apologize. So HERSA, as I told you a meeting or two ago, our rates have greatly increased this year. This is based on their HERSA budget. Hopefully, when we start getting some of our water lines replaced, or sewer lines replaced, we'll go back down. But, so the HERSA budget numbers are all numbers that they gave us, and we just plug them in. The water plant upgrade was for the black flow system, where we have taken some other things out of that, like some SCADA and some other things that are related to the water plant upgrade. But that doesn't need to be repeated. Water and sewer line replacement, I continued with a hundred fifty thousand. So this year, that was for Cook's Creek. We did get an estimate back, it's about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars plus what they spent already cameraing it. And that will cover the Cook's Creek line down Bowman, and it will also cover the worst part of Mason here. So I'll talk to Finance Committee next week about getting that approved. But I carried that back over, because once that project gets done, and it should get done in this fiscal year, then we can start cameraing and identifying some other sewer lines that need to be replaced. And then the water fund contingency, I put up at fifty thousand, because this year we seem to have, there's just so many unknowns with that. We are transferring over a million dollars back over to the general fund, and we transferred one eighty-five, five eighty for all the capital projects other than the water plant project. Any questions on water and sewer?
So the capital fund, the capital projects that we're looking to do. So the capital fund, the capital projects that we're looking to do in 2021 are being funded by the water and sewer, the water plant revenues for that same year?
Yeah, yeah, and you've done that in the past, but.
So we are, so this would be normally money we would transfer into our savings, but we're doing capital funds. We're transferring this into those capital projects.
Those cap, right.
So for what we're looking to do, these capital projects will not take away from from our investment money that we're gonna use to build the water plant.
That's right, and you'll still have more than the 2.4 million left in the investments, and this just goes over there.
So how much cash do we currently have? Because?
Though, it's in the memo somewhere, I think.
Because you had investments and you had currently is 4.8 million, but remember an email, we had like five point something, including all the cash that we had found or had, or it's in our accounts.
Yeah, and so and I'll, I'll reconcile that before the Finance Committee meeting and make sure. I did, I wanted to put a page in here of our cash balances for the past few years, and what I pulled off the S drive might have been a couple of months old before we, Susan, was that probably before we, the 4.8, before we transferred that other money out of checking? I'll let you know, Jeff, next week, and then we'll, I'll put that in this, in the final budget document as well.
Right.
So the plans are that we'll, that we'll take these notes that we have here, clean up whatever needs to be cleaned up. This will go to Finance Committee next week. And so if you have any other comments or questions between now and Finance Committee, that'd be a good time. We'll make a few tweaks on this budget. It should be substantially the same, I would imagine, unless Finance Committee sees otherwise. And then we'll bring you back what's hopefully the final budget for you to approve us to advertise at the May meeting. So if there's anything that you want us to tweak or move around, obviously, as I said, I found a couple of mistakes, but I will include the cash flow balances. I give you a history of those. I just working out of my house and have access to all the old audits that I needed, and it wasn't all on the S drive. But I will, I'll get you a graph. I was also gonna put graphs in here about our revenue sources and things like that, and I can still do that for the May meeting if you would like.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm that, that $150,000 for the water sewer line replacement, that's just gonna be an ongoing thing. We have so much of that that needs to be repaired throughout town. That's just gonna be recurring charge each fiscal year.
Yeah, I started to take some money out of there and not do as much next year, but it was pretty easy for them to find the 125,000, $150,000 to do, and I, we know we have some other problems around town.
Yeah, once they start looking, they're gonna find bigger problems, because the, the amount of money that we're paying extra for this HERSA, we've gotta do everything we can to fix these so we can reduce those annual rates.
Right, and some of what they cambered, we, on Mason Street, or we didn't get all the way down. What they're finding on most of the lines is they're so full of roots that they're having to dig them out, and their cameras are, it's quite a little process, so once we get done with this, we'll continue going down Mason Street. They did see some issues they thought coming up, and then we'll just keep identifying the areas where the flow isn't what it should be.
Do we know how much at the end of this fiscal year as a reserve amount? With our budget?
There's no reserve added in here except for the contingency.
No, no, on our current year. So there are current year, some of the things we haven't spent as much on, things have changed. Are we are we expect to have a surplus after the end of this current year?
Yeah, so that was a mistake that, and that's my fault this weekend. I, I was looking at the wrong columns and thought we had projected out already for that. So before next, next week, Finance Committee, we will project out our expenses. A few major expenses still coming in, like we haven't paid feed and bores to anything for their engineering fees and Brunken Hilton and stuff. So I know that there's some contracts still out there that we have to pay this year, so we can fill those projected. There's a column there. It didn't get done on August. So.
Okay, so wondering, on this budget summary portion, just transfer this, this, uh, we've got to transfer into the general fund for revenues of 1,000,012,000. And under the expenditures, you just have water and sewer fund, just a lump sum of 3,722,000. And you have an income of, of the water and sewer fund of 3,722.
Yeah, so if you look at the water sewer fund, that
Would that be broken out in the summary, like, you know, for water and sewer expenditures is one, you know, a million of that, 3, 3,700,000 is actually just a transfer up to the general fund?
Yeah, I can do that, just to show.
And, and then 185,000 is a transfer from water and sewer to our capital fund, just so transfers in the summary that we're sending money from our water fund to our general fund to pay for operations, and then money to our capital fund to pay for capital expenditures.
Sure, I can do that the same way we did the general fund revenues and up there where it shows a transfer at the bottom. I can do that.
Okay, because you've got the capital fund expenditures. Yeah, 1.785. And, and then you've got capital fund and revenues, 175, but we're getting 1.6 million from outside, from investments. So how do we reconcile that? Like, where's that 1.6? Like, because they're gonna see, uh, we, our budget has increased from 5.7 million to 7.4 million. Holy cow. Well, that's 1.6 of that is, you know, our, our plant we're paying for. Where's that money coming from? And I can't see just in the summary where that, where that money's coming from.
Okay, I will do that.
A way to do something like that, so we can say, hey, we're not, you know, blowing up the budget, we're building the water plant, and this is where the money's coming from.
Yeah, I'll do that. That would be important, I think, when you're
When you're looking at
This budget summary will be the main part of the advertisement that goes in the paper.
And I don't want the DNR to misquote us again by saying, hey, our budget's $7 million, or really, our budget isn't. I mean, you know, really, you know, if we're not transferring, because we, we double counted the million dollars when Joe was doing our budget, it was some ridiculous amount. This, we're not we're inflating it. So when we talk to DNR, we don't wanna say, here's our budget. We're spending billions of dollars every little Dayton.
Yeah, so I'll break that down under capital fund revenues. I'll end down and put transfer from water and sewer and transfer from investments. How about that?
And for the, the narrative, the, the narrative you supplied under, um, under Parks, Recreation and Culture on page six, it's got funding for the Red Bud Festival and Autumn Festival are offset, partially offset by, by fees by vendors, but the, those, those two events, all right, you know, you put those two together and they're fully offset. I mean, those are, you know, autumn festivals, you make money, red bud, you lose a little bit, but those together, they're a net neutral, that they don't they're a net cost, they're not a cost to the town. So I would say they totally offset each other, and then just get one of the offsets as a typo.
Okay, yep, okay. What page was that? Was that in the narrative you said?
That was page six. Yeah, page six, that memo up top.
Okay, yeah, I see it right there.
Yeah, because we, with the, with the muddler, the red bud and the autumn celebration, all those were they get paid for by the participants or the vendors. The only thing that town really spent any money on was the concerts. And I guess it says here under that, then page five, Mike's salary is 50% in marketing and events, and then I guess the other 50% development. So is he gonna play a, so he's gonna delve more into businesses now, or is that?
His 50% in community development is mainly the concerts and the muddler and things like that.
Okay, oh, so the muddler got moved to community development, that's why, okay.
No, I'm sorry. I don't need the muddler. I need the red bud and the Dayton days.
The red bud. He's got, so he's got 50% in community development, and the other 50 was in Parks and Recs. Part of development is, is economic development. Is that correct?
Angela, I think you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I got almost all the way through the meeting before it kicked me out this time. I thought my headset was doing the trick. I'm sorry, what else I, um, so red button Dayton days. Or Mike spends most of his time under community development. He does go to he does have relationships with the shops. He does some social, social media, um, marketing.
He attends the economic development meetings.
Pardon me?
And he attends the economic development meetings.
He attended the first one. After that, I told him he didn't really need to because they were late in the evening. He may come back into as we, you know, if we get a speaker or something like that.
Right.
But those have been put on hold until all of this silliness is over.
Yeah.
Anything else? If not, we will play with this, tweak it a little bit more. Enhance it and get it back out to you guys.
Good work on it. It makes a lot of sense.
Thanks, Angela.
Thanks, Angela.
Sorry, it took so long to get it to you.
That's quite all right. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I don't know. Krista, are you there?
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
I guess everybody was all in favor of that.
Yeah.
All right, thanks everybody. Appreciate your help.
Good to see everybody.
Yeah, yeah, stay safe.
Hang in there.